Girls are playing three.
Hopefully we won't and just gave you football game just like. It was cool up there.
Yeah, I was thinking about that. It's like I'd like to go to the game. But it's like it's like it's that time of year where you get out the heavy coat, heavy coat.
Well, the sun goes down once.
Oh, yeah.
Fifteen degrees.
I saw some kid, I was coming here and I see some kid riding down the screen on his bike with just a T-shirt on. And it's like I'm sitting in my car with a seat.
We're going six o'clock.
Run.
There we go.
Good morning.
Very good. All right. Call me in order. First off, it's a pleasure.
Congratulations to the United States of America, to their honor, which stands for my nation, underdog, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Approval of the minutes of September twenty-third in twenty twenty-four, September thirty of twenty twenty-four, and October seventh, twenty twenty-four. We have a motion for that.
Motion.
No motion. We have a second. And a second from Earl. Are there any corrections, additions, changes, or a discussion? All right, hearing now, all in favor of approving those minutes as presented. Stuff is approving a roll of accounts dated October third, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of five hundred ninety thousand, seventy-eight dollars and seven cents. And dated October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of two hundred and forty-three thousand, twenty-six dollars and forty-two cents. Do we have a motion to approve those rolls?
Silver, second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving those rolls as presented? Report of committees, do we have any committee reports?
Adult education has one.
Go right ahead.
Um, just briefly, uh, for the fall twenty twenty-four enrollment. We have, uh, five Winslow students in credit recovery. So they're working to gain, um, credits for their high school diploma. And eleven, um, that went through HiSET, which is now the, what's used in place of the GED. So the high school skills equivalency test, eleven went through last year.
Great. Sorry.
Silver.
Very good. All right.
Do we want to mention that we met, the curriculum, curriculum committee met and okayed the language arts tenth and eleventh grade curriculum?
Yep.
They've put together.
Yeah, so we have on the agenda for both approval.
Already then.
Michelle will give us an explanation of those when we get to that point, right?
Michelle, I try, I'm sorry.
A committee didn't.
I try.
Yeah.
Trying to give her a little work.
And, uh, and the policy committee has some. Some, uh, policies on here for reaffirmation as well. All right. Um, so administrators, um, Erica's not here, so we'll start first.
Hey, thank you. Since our last meeting, we had, uh, I guess we'll start with our two-hour delay in workshop day, uh, starting with the. Two-hour delay on Thursday the tenth, Erica had a nice, um, presentation put together and as a staff, we had some of those other conversations around. You know, things that we can do throughout the day with our students based on what they're going to need, you know, that could be around making connections with. Adults that they're, um, you know, working with or their peers or things like activators if they need to step away from what they're doing at the moment. You kind of have a spark of energy, uh, to kind of regain their focus before they return. You know, things like that, kind of tying into, um, things that we already have built into our daily schedule around like morning meeting, quiet time that we have set up. Or closing circle at the end of day. So we really had some good conversations there with that two-hour delay. The next day on the eleventh, Friday, the eleventh was a in-service day. A lot of it was around the, um, iReady math training. Right there at the elementary school. So we had some good work there. Some of our, um, older teachers, like really the sixth-grade teachers had a. Chance to spend part of their day with some teachers in the older grades, um, more content specific for them. The eighteenth, we had our first PTO bingo night. That was Friday the eighteenth. That was very successful. It was full house in there. So that's a lot of fun had by all that were, you know, who was able to join us. We really appreciate, um, all the work and support from our PTO volunteers. There's a lot that goes into that. So we really appreciate all that they do for our, our school. This past Friday, October twenty-fifth, uh, that was the end of the main three-year testing window. Uh, so students in our school, grades, um, three through six. Worked on a math and reading assessment. So we appreciate, um, all the, all their work and focus on those tests and trying their best for those. And the work with their teachers to, you know, um, get them prepared for that and really encouraging them to do their best. So that window just finished up. This past Friday where we had our last few students finishing. Uh, looking ahead to November, uh, next Monday and Wednesday, the fourth and sixth of November, we'll have our parent guardian teacher conferences. Uh, starting at three o'clock both nights. Uh, we have a link on our school website. Who families can go and sign up to meet with their child's teacher. So we're looking forward to those two nights for families to come into our school. Uh, the last few things, September, Saturday, September, uh, excuse me, November night, Saturday, November night. We have our PTO craft fair right there at the elementary school and that is, uh, from nine until two o'clock in the afternoon. And as we get into the middle and end of November, we'll be having our first round of student spotlight assemblies where we'll be recognizing, um. A number of students for all the great things that are going on right there at the elementary schools. That's all I have for tonight.
All right. They're working on a drama production at the elementary school.
Yes. Yep, uh, they're working hard on that right now. I think they're, they have rehearsals, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, uh, throughout the week. And I think their production is beginning December. I want to say, uh, that first week of December, I'm not certain on that. I can check and follow up.
Okay.
Next meeting.
I assume it'll be posted on the website anyway. It isn't already, but yeah, okay.
Yeah, so they got a ways to go before the, uh, production, but they're working hard for sure.
They always put on a break trip.
Yes, they do.
All right. Any questions for the elementary school? Very good. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Mr. Briggs?
I'm gonna wait till my goals presentation.
All right.
Good evening. Um, just again, some students to recognize from here in the tech center for students of the month. Here at the high school for us, in the freshman class, we had Silver Picard, sophomores with Jamison DeWile. Uh, junior was Alicia Perkins and senior was Emma Farlow. And also at the tech center, we were fortunate to have recognized Liam Fortin in automotive services, Haley Camp in culinary arts. And Jocelyn Liza in early childhood. So, so they all did a great job this year and off to a great start.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. A couple of quick things, uh, we as well just done with our testing, um, over the last couple of weeks. A lot of the work that we've been doing on, um, late start, early release, or not early, late start and, um. In-service days are going to kind of tie to my goals presentation next month. So I'll just kind of wait and update everybody, uh, with that. But there's a lot of great conversation going about data chats with students and how we can use the data that we're collecting, whether it's through iReady. Classroom assessments, NWEAs, PSATs, and how can we have deeper conversations with kids on how they're doing in the classroom? So more on that, um, next month when I give that. We have a futures day coming up next week and those who've been on the board for a while, heard me talk about this as one of the best days, I think we have of the entire school here. Where we emptied the entire school and, um, every staff member, every kid is on a trip that's either a college, a two-year college, a four-year college. Looking at businesses, this year we're going out to, uh, there's an opportunity to go to like Sheridan, there's an opportunity to go to Inland. Uh, there's a couple others and I'm. It's escaping me right now off the top of my head because it's been a long day, but, um, so getting them into a business. We're going, um, up to. The Air National Guard up in Bangor with a group. Uh, we're bringing some kids to Job Corps to see what they do post-secondary at Job Corps. So. Our goal is by the time a kid graduates from Winslow High School, they've been to four different opportunities that tie to what their post-secondary layer are. Um, it's a great day. A couple of weeks ago, I went on a NEAS visit to a school, um, in Maine. And I was at a building for three days and it really, I told my staff, this is some of the best professional development that you can do. While I was away, I got the notice that I have a three-year report due for NEAS in February. So, um, you know, going through that process now at my FLT meeting on Wednesday, we're going to be reviewing kind of where we've been. But where going, you know, going away to another school and seeing a school through kind of a different lens. Made me realize the work that our staff has done in the last five years since, um, we started the NEAS accreditation process back in. For maybe seven years. I think we started in twenty eighteen. The work and the change, especially when it comes to classroom instruction, has, uh, we've come leaps and bounds. And so as I reflect and I start to do this report, which you guys will see, um, as it gets completed in January, February. There's been a lot of great work happening at Winslow High School and I'm very proud of where we've come, really proud.
All I had for you tonight? Any questions? All right, thank you. We have Michelle.
Good evening. And some of the things I'll share echo what you might have already heard, but, um, also did my curfew as well, so I would share. We recently had, um, a teacher professional development day on October eleventh. We've worked very hard to coordinate professional development that spans K-12 and all the content areas. We've used Title II to bring more robust, um. Programs to educate teachers. So I want to highlight iReady, our iReady work this year. This is our third year, I think, of our math program. So the professional development that we're ready for is no longer about the math program. It's about math. So we brought in three modules for teachers to work on math. And, um, you know, we invited the junior high school faculty to come to that as well because kids that show up in their classes with lagging skills. Maybe they're missing number sense and an eighth-grade teacher is not really used to teaching that. So to have them come and review, what is number sense? How do we understand fractions? How do we, and to do the activities and do the math? I think was a very rich experience for them. Maine Math and Science Alliance, we have a science coach that would become with the entire year to work with our six through twelve, uh, science teachers. Three workshop day experiences and then two coaching cycles, one in the surface of the hall, one in the spring. And then we've working with, um, Kim Holic from Foundations for Futures for our social studies, science, and ELA teachers on that opening day of school workshop. Our data shows that kids in Winslow were struggling with their natural texts, some vocabulary and vocabulary. So we have her coming, came in, she came in and did a workshop that day. The next day, October eleventh, she worked with social studies in ELA and science peeled off to be with her coach. And that was such a positive experience and teachers have said they're going back to their rooms and they're trying some of the strategies. Um, the intent was for social studies to peel off now and the rest of the year just be ELA and the social studies teachers said we'd like to continue with working with the, with the specialists. So that's encouraging to hear. So a lot of good things happening, um, in professional development. As you know, our NUI, uh, main three-year testing window closed Friday afternoon. I closed that window, so we should be able to go in and take a peek at some of the scores. Of course, you remember that the fall scores are just the baseline, just setting the baseline for the year. What we'll really be looking for is with the junior high. I think, uh, Jason said they'll take it again in the winter to get a mid-year point, to see how we're progressing on our growth goals and so forth. And the one that really counts publicly is the spring. So we've been looking forward to that. So the fall is a, is an opportunity just to assess where we are as a baseline. So I wanted to thank our assessment team in the district, which is Tom Hersam, Nina Marin, Kate Hersam, Will Backman, and Tom McNeil. We meet as a group and they're in the buildings on the front lines administering and managing partners and tests and they do a fabulous job. I mean, really outstanding job. So thank you for.
Michelle, got a question?
Yes.
What grades are testing through the NUI?
For the main three-year assessments for grades three through eight.
So every, so three, four, five, six, seven, eight?
Yep, and then grade ten.
And then grade ten. And then, so grade eight, using the current model, grade eight this year will test again in two years. As tenth grade. Is the intent to measure those to determine. Where that student's at and do you do that with the cohorts that are going through now? Like?
Check their fall to spring.
And then the previous, the previous years, like this year's fourth grade, their scores against what they were in third grade?
Yep.
What's their growth?
Yep, we have needs to do all of them. And then we can look at, you know, certain populations, like the power girls doing, how the boys doing, how the special kids doing, how the non-special kids doing. So. It's, we have access to a lot.
Yeah.
It's, in the summertime is when we. Kind of everyone lets their hair down and can really look at that. And then we come to the leadership retreat with some knowledge. And when the leaders show up, then we kind of present and guide that discussion based on what we've learned from those scores. Lastly, um, annually, twice a year, actually, we have what we call K-12 curriculum meetings. Or each representative from each department come to central office. We get together in the hall and we get together again in March. Um, in those meetings, we review data, any data that we have for that department. We review the curriculum, where are we with Atlas, where are we with standards? Is it time to update, you know, where are we with that work? We set goals for the coming year. Uh, we review any professional development needs. It's out of these meetings that we identify needs and hire people to start coming to, to meet those needs. And we have time for, from the floor. I just wanted to share some highlights that have come up that are kind of exciting things, I think. This year, our media specialist Heidi Murray asked to attend several of those meetings. Her goal is to find ways that the library and the media resources can be more intimately woven into the general ed experience, more collaborative work. So she wanted to come in here, what each department is dealing with, what are they working on and ways that she can intersect with that to offer support. That's been very positive to have her be a member of those conversations. She herself is a teacher and I think she misses that experience. She's really eager to find places where she can collaborate with our faculty, get in the classroom and work with them. So that's been a real benefit this year. Our art program, um, we are talking about ways to expand opportunities for kids K-12. Meaning we have a couple of programs where our high school kids are going and working with our elementary kids. We have a, a neat project going on with some elementary kids. Have done some drawings about robots. Those drawings will be collected and given to the high school painting class. They will. Bring these robots to life and then there'll be a big reveal in the spring and the kids don't really know all that, but. Behind the scenes, that's what's going on. And that's going to be really exciting and I'm sure that's something that we would invite all of you to attend because that's going to be really fun. Um, we're also looking for ways to provide internal professional development for our staff. So there'll be a ceramics workshop taking place in the next. In January for our art teachers. We'll do it here at the high school and they're going to work together and learn ceramics together. So that's exciting for them. The music and art departments are looking for ways to collaborate, especially around the holidays. We've got some GT art students working on printmaking and some. The younger kids are doing a different kind of card craft and then they will travel with, one group will go with the high school band. And one group will go with a sixth-grade chorus and give out cards and then music. So we're looking for all those ways to mix the older and the younger kids together and to share. Uh, work across departments. The University of Maine Choir is scheduled to come in March to do a concert for a select group here at the school. That would be very exciting. The technology department net, they are going to provide a technology workshop among themselves to showcase all the robotics supplies we have across the district to see where they are. How they're being used, uh, teach one another about them and then strategize on ways we can get that out to the general classrooms where. There's a little fear about teachers like, oh, that's scary. But so brainstorming ways to showcase those things. So that's exciting. The modern language department is going to have French three students go to first and second grade. For years now, we've talked about the importance of bringing another language to kids at a younger age. They learn languages better when they're younger. There's no modern language teacher at the elementary school. There are no. So how can we use our resources that we have in district to make that happen more often? So we're going to use the kids. Our advanced French students are preparing a lesson on animals right now. They're going to go to the first grade and the second grade and do. Story, the singing, gaming type things with the animals in French, um, to give some exposure to that to the young kids. So we're excited about that. The ESO, the ESOL, um, department, that part of the department is looking for professional development for teachers on, working with kids who, whose English is not their first language. As you can imagine, that's very, very challenging and, and the kids arrive like that and boom, they're in your room. They speak Arabic. You know, what are you going to do? You look around, you don't have anything there. So we've really been working very hard on thinking about what is an appropriate, uh, professional development opportunity for those teachers? When the child shows up in your room, what can you do? And of course, science has got a coaching experience. So it's a lot, but there's a lot of exciting things happening in each department. At the end of the meetings, they'll end this week. I've got three departments this week. I published the minutes. And get Peter and everybody a copy. So if you ever wanted to see what the conversations are in detail.
That's a good staff.
Yeah.
I have as much to report as Michelle. Um, I'll also start with the October eleventh professional development days. The special education teachers participated. In the building level activities with each of their buildings. Our support staff. Um, K to twelve as well as some of the general education interventionists participated in, um, CPR certification. Safety care training as well as positive behavioral support practices and positive school climates with Dr. Karen Roby from the University of Maine. As well as she's also the state coordinator for PBIS. So we're really working, that's going to be a three-part series to provide consistency for all of our support staff. Across the district of now until March for each one of those professional development days that we have. We just finished up our October first count for our special education numbers. Last October, the district is, was at two hundred and ninety-three. This October, we are at three hundred and seventeen. And we have twenty-two referrals so far to special education. I think in anticipation of this increase, uh, last spring, there was the addition of the school psychologist as well as a resource room teacher. And that school psychologist really has helped keep costs down by having someone in district and not have to contract out for all of those evaluations. And we've also been able to maintain some very, very tight federal timelines on new referrals. So we're in compliance on all of those. And the, um, resource room teacher has really been able to keep case loads, um, that are manageable. That's really all I have for tonight. It's been a very busy month and I'm very happy to be here and seeing myself with all of my colleagues and learning about the district.
Just a question, Earl, you said two ninety-three and there's three seventeen plus twenty-two?
Um, so the twenty-two are in referral, so we still have to go through the evaluation and potential identification.
But it's three seventeen and then the potential for.
Yeah.
That's substantial increase, yes.
Yeah, and I, uh, you know, I, I did dive a little deeper into that data and of those twenty, of those referrals, seven of those are kindergarten students. So keeping in mind what happened four, five years ago and.
Right, sure.
Seeing, yeah, yeah. For first graders and three-year secondary. There's a big learning loss.
Earl, you have a question?
I do have a question concerning the psychologist that I, I don't want to ask to create more work, but is there. Is there a, a, a financial delta for each student that is seen in-house versus would need to be seen outside? And could that be added up so that way when we get to budget time, that information can be presented? And look, are the decisions made saved the taxpayers X amount of money?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, contracting, you know, just rough numbers, contracting for a full psychological evaluation and if, if it included some academic evaluation. Could be twelve hundred to twenty-four hundred dollars per student in a contracted service person. So, you know, if each one of our psychologists on average with reevaluations and new referrals does fifty-five to seventy-five evaluations. Kind of make that comparison. Most are, you know, one hundred and twenty to two hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
And I just have a comment on that because my son just went through an evaluation. And it is so much work and this school psychologist, I mean, this report that I read that Jean Anne, right, Jean Marie, Jean. Had put together, it is so thorough. It is so well done. She is so qualified. It pages and pages of thoughtful. I mean, about my kid, do you know what I mean? It's, she understands children so well. Yeah, it's just, it's so well done. And then you also have, like you said, in-classroom evaluations. It is a huge project and we are very lucky to have.
Forty-five days to do.
That's wild to me. It's, and it's so thorough. It's well done and we've got great people doing that work. So I think sometimes. People get confused when they hear school psychologist. Their, that evaluation is to help. Through, you know, learning disabilities, through emotional, you know, some behavioral stuff through, it's, it's so, um, important. And we have a great team doing it and I'm just, I'm super grateful because we just kind of went through that and, yeah. It's, I was amazed at the quality and the amount of work that goes into it.
Obviously, the timeline is important because you want to get those kids on the right path as soon as you can.
Yeah.
Well, and you're also working with federal and state guidelines. There's a time limit from when a kid gets referred. When all of that has to get spit back out and have an IEP meeting. You don't, you don't have wiggle room in there, so.
Right, no, well, obviously we're going to make them, make sure we're compliant with regulations, but obviously they're there for that reason is to get.
Yes, but what you were saying, four to five days, you have twenty-two referrals. That's a lot of days that you have a timeline. That referral thing is ticking, you know, so, yeah. So kudos.
No, it's, it's good to hear the detail of that because that's, it's important for people in the public to hear as well. There's a lot of work there.
Oh, yeah, there's.
So. Any other questions? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, Cory or Jim, whoever wants to be up next. Jim looks pretty comfortable right there.
Since your last meeting, it's been another busy month. Um, we had a scheduled power shutdown to get the telephone and the power lines at the end of the junior high school raised up. So it was in a, uh, potential hazard. Uh, so we did a scheduled shutdown, had those raised up over the weekend. Uh, we had a boiler repaired. One boiler started leaking, which we had to regasket it, two new sections. And the meantime, uh, we had a squirrel take out a, uh, phase on the electric that supplies the school, which is the. Result was we lost the Balcom system. So we've been working with the vendor to get it back online. Uh, earlier la, uh, mid-last week, we were able to get the bills and all call back. They're coming tomorrow to finish the programming and then if they need to come back at a later date to just verify everything works. So we're not bothering the kid by setting alarms across the PA system. But we're going to hope that everything works tomorrow, but they might come back to get, uh, looking at eleven, uh, November eighth. Because the in-service stage is to get back to make sure everything is wired up and working properly.
We need to put those not some other place.
Yeah, well, I don't think we have to worry about that squirrel anymore.
Squirrel one. Any questions for Cory? All right. I think I'll take the opportunity to say something about buildings and grounds and so forth. I've been gone to main school management conferences last week and talking with other people from other districts and so forth, and hearing some of the things they were working on, some of the projects they're trying to do. I don't think people realize how good we have it. With the buildings in the shape that they are, with our two buildings, obviously with the junior high addition added on, the shape that our buildings are in. And compared to, and for the, you know, yes, we've put some local bond money into that, but for the amount of work we've been able to do to keep put these buildings in the shape they're in, for the amount of money we've spent is, we're in phenomenal shape compared to a lot of school districts that either can't raise the funds locally for one reason or another, there's a variety of reasons. Some of that is because they're trying, they're spending significant money because they, you know, and for a variety of reasons, whether they've got behind on their maintenance, they've had some significant failures, whatever the reasons. Obviously, the state is trying, is looking at revamping how they're giving out capital funds for buildings. But they're a long ways from having an answer and a lot further away from having the money that it would take to get the state where they keep talking about where they want to be, getting aid to some of the buildings. But when you hear the news stories about some of the schools that they've had to shut down or some of the school districts that, I mean, I've been to a number of school buildings, we've probably all been to a number of school buildings, but we're in pretty darn good shape, particularly for the amount of money we've spent for what we've got. And we've got good, reliable buildings, generally, aside from the squirrel here and there. But that's, but that's all part of it. And I think that's, I think one of the failures, I think, in the, in the school construction funding formula is that, one of the failures of that system is that there's not a lot of consideration about money that's spent on maintenance and upkeeping your building. And it's a lot cheaper to keep it up than it is to replace it. And I think, you know, obviously Shelley handled that for many years and Cory's taken us the reins since. But in hearing what's going on in other school districts, we're in pretty good shape and we should be very happy about that. And quite honestly, I think it's been the right move, I think, on many fronts, including financially, to do the moves we've done. Because there's a lot of other things going on out there that, a lot of other projects that people are trying to get done and they're talking a lot more money than, than we've spent. And they're just talking about, you know, renovations and adding half as many rooms as we have, for example, for the junior high wing and such, and spending a lot more money than we spent. So, so, yeah. Can't say much more about that. I mean, I think people need to understand that we could be in really bad shape if we weren't doing what we're doing. Because it can creep up on you and, and I think we've, Shelley led that parade for a long time and, and kudos to her. But, but budgetary with the administrators and everything else to stay ahead of the problem. And, and we all, I think, realize that the state's not going to bail us all out either. Because they just don't have the resources to do it. So I just want to put that in there, it's one of the things that I've been talking to people, I really, I mean, I always thought we had, we were in pretty good shape. But when you hear what's going on with others and it's like, you want to do this with your building and you're spending how much? Wow, we gotta bargain on what we've done. You know, and we're done. You know, that project is taken care of and they're fighting for more money to do less. So, anyway. Keep up the good work.
So the fall regular season's done here, we're in the playoffs. Our boys soccer team lost a great game Saturday, they lost 8-6 in the retreat.
Wow.
Sorry, it was 8-6. It didn't help that the wind was about 80 miles an hour, so. But tomorrow, we have the girls soccer team hosting John Bats. The field hockey team's going up to Dexter. Next Saturday's the cross-country state track, uh, cross-country state meet down in the Twin Brooks. And then football hosts.
Madison.
You're on Saturday?
Yeah, you're Saturday, 1 o'clock. So we have the two seed in football, so we finish strongly.
Wow.
And I would like to also just say that the, the cheerleaders went to where Invitational last weekend, finished second. And they got the sportsmanship award, so that's all good. And I'll close on this, today I brought six student athletes to a leadership conference at Edward Little. And I got to ask so proud of the way they, they were, they drafted, they were really, they were, they made me smile. Way down the van ride, it's so quiet and the way home, there was so much talking about how the day went. And it was kind of neat to see the kids come together because they were all from a cross-section of sports, they weren't from one sport or anything. So it was great day.
But they're always love.
And the girls are tomorrow at 3 o'clock at home, if anybody wants to see that. And then junior high boys have their last game, 4 o'clock Wednesday.
I guess we'll.
I'll be there, I'll be there. You're always in that shack, she's a colleague.
She's just left there for a JV game today, they won 30 to 12 or something, junior high.
36 to 12.
There we go.
Good for them.
Bring your mom jacket tomorrow.
Yeah, really.
Yeah. Really ready?
It's that time of year for soccer.
Yeah, boy.
And they're done.
It's gonna be 70 on Halloween.
Yeah, 70.
And the girls are fourth ranked in the state, that's the best season they've had in like six years. Yeah.
I remember that season.
Very exciting.
I wonder why.
Are you going tomorrow?
No, 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 I remember that, I'd love to, I died up all day. No, I remember six years ago, I was involved with that.
Yeah.
Great to sit back at that level.
Yeah.
All right, all good stuff. All right, go Raiders. All right. I guess. Joe, can you follow all that?
That 31.8% of the fiscal year has passed and 32.2, 0.2% has been spent out. So we can already see lots of variance.
All right, any questions for Amanda? All right. Go Amanda. All right. Thank you. Peter's back.
Yeah, so Joel alluded to this, he and I attended the MSSA, MSBA conference. And the conference is an opportunity for school board members and superintendents to attend workshops that on different topics that we're all facing throughout the state and some school districts. Keynote was Thomas Murray, he did a presentation on leading with intention. Main theme of his presentation was to ask us not to lose sight of why you do what you do as board members and leaders. Not to lose sight of why you do what you do. Because we continue to roll into the year, it's very important to remember that. Listening to him gives me an opportunity to thank this board sincerely for the countless hours that you put into the work that you do in serving as a board member on behalf of the students and the families in this community. So thank you, because I, you know, I look around when I go to these things and there were a lot of board members there. And I'm very thankful for all of you for the time that you gave for us to do that. Joel and I went to several sessions, to say the least, we divided and conquered. Things ranged from First Amendment rights with different cases, what prevented on different topics, to the year review by Drummond Woodson. As always, it's very informative, I look forward to sharing some of the information with the administrators, the administrative team, some of the topics that we've talked about, the policy committee, some of the things we'll need to discuss. So it was a lot of good information. We also wanted to report that the nurses gave us a report recently, we had a flu clinic, flu. And of course, that's free for our students and Maine General work with our schools. So we had 53 students and 15 staff at Windsor Elementary took advantage of that opportunity. We had the junior high, there were 37 students that were exiting from the flu. And along with three staff members, and the high school had 64 students who participated with that and 16 staff. It's also important to note that we had all of our schools also participated in a dental clinic that was held this, this past few weeks. We had 61 students at the elementary school who participated in that, that was screened, they went through the screening. And we had 65 junior and high school kids.
Wow.
That took part of that. So that's, that's very telling, very high numbers, very telling. Tomorrow, we have our second book study on a book called Behavior Code, which is a book that we're reading with anybody who wants to read it. Basically, it's offed any staff member who wants to participate. We had our first meeting, 13 students participated. Really is a practical guide to understanding and teaching the most challenging students. And tomorrow, the highlight is on anxiety and what can you do to help students who have a lot of anxiety? How do you, how do you, how do you work with that? We meet at the elementary school and we start at 2:30. Policy meeting scheduled for November 12th, 3:15, superintendent's office. And I would like to, the last thing I'd like to say is just to give a quick shout out to our bus drivers. Last week, I believe it was Thursday or Friday, we had three bus drivers out. And we only have 10 bus drivers. And when one bus driver is out, it's chaos. Because you have to figure out who's on that bus, where do they live? And then you have to find the other bus routes that come close to that. And we divide it up and find out who's picking who up. Then, for each one of those students, you have a slip that you write. The elementary school is scrambling because they're writing slips, because the slip's got to go with the child. The child takes the slip to the bus, make sure you're on the correct bus. Last week, we had three people on, morning and afternoon runs. And the building administrators, the bus drivers, everybody who worked that to make that work as smoothly as it could, to be commended. It's not uncommon to hear some school districts that get into this situation, cancel the day because they can't get the kids in. And kudos to our folks because they've never done that, they've always worked hard to make it happen. So I thought it was important to mention that because it's another example of people in this district doing what needs to be done to get the job completed on behalf of the kids. That's all I have.
There's just one transfer that's listed on the agenda.
On the agenda, there is one transfer. Jennifer Winslow, who is a Winslow High School Special Ed Tech 3. She asked, requested to be transferred to the Winslow Student Support Specialist at Tech 3, which is that new position that created, well, not new, we had the position, but funded differently this particular year. Which leaves that Ed Tech 3 position open, but Christine has been interviewing and has a candidate which she's very excited about. So hopefully, we'll, at the next board meeting, we'll have that name for you, for a nomination for you.
Good with Jennifer, she's very experienced. All right. Public comment is up next. I don't think we have anybody here from the public. So I'll dispense with reading my introduction to public comment, but I will say for anybody that is tuning in online that there is an introduction to public comment that's available on our website, as well as a copy of our policy. That'll give you an introduction and how it works and what it's meant to be and what it isn't and what our policies are so that you can comply with the policy and present your information that you'd like to, to the board. If you'd like to, another very good way is you don't have to speak publicly, you can email us with your, with your, your comments and we will surely see those, so. Given that we have no one here, I will dispense with reading the introduction and call public comments closed. And we'll move on to old business, which we have no old business on our agenda. So next up is new business. We had the elementary school goals up first, but there was a family situation with Mrs. Gower, so she was unable to attend something. So that'll get postponed until the next meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so that means we have, Mr. Briggs?
Junior high goals. Before Mr. Briggs does his presentation, I'd just like to make a couple of comments about these goals. Because a lot of time and energy has gone into putting these together. And these goals are really the start of budgeting, when you think about it. Because when you, when you look at what happens, and it's a cycle that continues to repeat itself every single year, it's a cycle. So when you look at last year, last spring, at the end of the year last spring, the administrators took a day and as an administrative team, we reviewed the data that we have on the goals that we had last year. How did we do on those goals, what is the data telling us? What are we going to take from that data and present it to the summer leadership retreat? Which is then 35, 40-plus teachers join the administrative team to look at the whole area of academic achievement, student achievement, and the respectful and responsible student, which fall, which has many subcategories like attendance and anxiety and all the things that we've been talking about, that we've been, that we're working with this year. So from that summer retreat, again, you develop the goals. And those goals sometimes have a monetary figure attached to it, which is the start of your budget. Because you want your budget to support what it is you're doing. And so that's how that process works. And so tonight, you're going to hear from Mr. Briggs, what the junior high is going to be working on as a result of what's the work he's done with his staff during the summer and this fall to date. And Michelle alluded to the professional development that's in place that we're working on in the area of curriculum. That too is all a part of this process. So Mr. Briggs?
Good evening. So I'm going to provide you a snapshot of our goals. Basically, what Peter just alluded to, he wanted us to share how these goals were developed, so I'll fly through this because he, he shared this. But basically, we talked about a roadmap. We collect data, we talk about data a lot, you're going to hear a lot of discussion about that tonight and as well as the elementary and high school principals, I'm sure. So in the spring, we look at everything, from all the behavior infractions to attendance to what are our reading scores, I-ready, main through year. That's, when we say data, that's what we're talking about. We bring that to the administrative retreat, can bounce ideas off each other, what are other schools seeing? What's working, what is not working, et cetera. We bring it to then our summer faculty retreat, as Peter just alluded to. For us, it is nine individuals and myself, representation from each department, sign, social studies, English, et cetera. Special Ed representation, technology representation, school counselor and assistant principal, who we do share, Chris, to run numbers for the summer. In that retreat, we talk a lot about professional development. What do we need that may or may not have that monetary cost? The word of, for the summer, for us was excellence. When we looked at what do we do, we just kind of stopped for a second and we talked about our scores, which are not as good as we hoped. How do we achieve or get to that excellence? And what do we need to do differently? So we kind of wrote the word excellence, how are we excellent and what are things we need to continue to do? What are things we need to stop doing? People are afraid oftentimes, creatures of habit, keep doing what's not working. A lot of sports fans out there, you're like, why are you doing the same thing and there's no results? That was a major topic for us. What do we just need to get rid of? That's what I'm going to kind of highlight tonight. And that one top right is that data chat, so you'll hear me say that quite frequently. So let's dive in. We're going to have four goals, I'm going to talk about, again, it's a snapshot, ask questions, please. We have the reading, the math, the respectful and responsible, and our attendance. So here's the reading. At our level, we're still talking about projection, growth projection. So we want students to start, we just took that main through year, we've done I-ready, here's where they're starting. We want to get them way, way up here. We want to get them way, way up here. So there's a projected growth that each individual should be at. For us last year, and I'm trying to make, put these in simplest of terms, only thirty-three percent of our students in reading met that, what the state would consider, this is what you need to get to. So we discussed, what are all the variables? And why are we, why is our numbers, why aren't they as high as they should be? And we put them into like, not like SMART goals, you know, what is, what is realistic? Seventy percent seems like a, wow, that's a major number. But we feel if a student is coming in at a second grade reading level, we need, there's a lot of growth there. We've got to get them, get them moving and we've talked a lot about that over the last few years. So reading in particular, our vision was more about the holistic approach. It wasn't just the English Language Arts teacher. So as we talk about action steps, one of the major topics for us in all of our goals was the family engagement. How can we do a better job at engaging family? I think we do a great job in our athletics. We do a great job, I think, with attendance, when someone's in trouble. But what about all the good things that are happening and how can we work together better? So we have some ideas for reading, that family engagement. They want to do kind of a curriculum night, a reading event similar to what the elementary school does. So we're in the planning, early planning phases of that, which is fantastic. Data chats, again, we're really good at talking to athletes about when they go oh-for-three in baseball and correcting, okay, what happened? We need to do more of that individually with students about now that we have concrete scores through our main through year with our I-ready. Talking to kids, hey, here's your score and be real, be confidential, not blurt it in front of everybody, but really talk to them about what their score means. We have a lot of pride, as we talk about athletics, I look around, everyone's so excited about the soccer games and the football games, which is fantastic. Our first assembly, Chad did it as well, I literally said, we want to beat these other schools in our reading math scores as well. And they're like, the seventh graders are going wild. I was like, all right, this is awesome. So getting them excited and make it that competitive, here's your score in fall. Here's your deficits, here's, here's the things you need to work on and let's in the winter make it, try to improve. We had many students retest the main through year. And kids, you know, we had, Mrs. Hurstman and I had conversations with them and a lot of them were, yeah, I did my best effort. It's like, okay, you wouldn't do that on the baseball field or in your drama performance, like, yeah, you're right. And they re, they retested for us, again, to sort of make that culture a little more meaningful, so testing. These two, Michelle talked a lot about the professional development. I won't get into all of it, but you'll see some words up there, Marzano. The other picture to the top right is that building thinking classrooms, the math we talked a lot about over the last few years. Our group really talked about things we need to stop doing. That's what I'm doing to you right now, is lecturing. So that was a lot of conversation at our level, movement in the classroom. So many kids, it's, you know, their heads down and they're just not, they're not engaged due to the strategies. And teachers are open to that. Michelle's done a great job at coordinating some of the district-wide pieces. We're breaking that down in our, our late starts and really making an emphasis on those two areas. Building a strong test, testing culture, I talked a little bit about that again. So the students now have an idea of what their I-ready score means, what their main through year test score means. Most of them, not all of them. So it, it's at least becoming common language within, within the school. Moving on to math, similar thing. So that growth projection, this is both grades seven and eight. Again, last year, the growth projection was thirty-six percent. So you can see the similar pattern with the reading and the math. Our goal is to get that number up to sixty percent. Michelle's talked about the I-ready. This year, we're focused more on our professional development into the math specific. So your teachers frustrated with kids coming in that are, you know, they're not at the seventh grade level, we understand that. So what are some things we can do to help them grow? So some of the action steps we discussed, once again, family engagement, once again, data chats. Math department specifically is identifying prerequisites for students. We have the luxury now with main through year and I-ready, it breaks it down to show you where, in which, which areas your student has deficits. So we have personal pathways in I-ready that they can work specifically on that. So being more intentful to say, this is where you can improve in those areas. Once again, specific training for I-ready trainings. In October, we had the late start and the full professional development day. Kudos to Michelle and Courtney, a lot of that for the topic of deepening math understanding. So it's not just the program, teacher should know, okay, this is how, we know how the program operates, let's, let's focus on the math. Once again, building that strong, strong test, testing culture. It's not me at any time. The chronic absenteeism rate, we're at twenty-six point six percent last year, which was actually higher than the year before. We'd like to drop that to ten percent from last year to this year. You can probably guess what that first one's going to be, it's the same thing, it's that family engagement. We have a new program called Reach My Teach. It's a platform to communicate with families. The luxury of Reach My Teach, it has a text feature. So a lot of times, believe it or not, you pick up the phone, you try to call someone, they don't answer. Generally with a text, parents are responsive. So it helps bridge kind of that gap with attendance. And Chris is fantastic as well. We do have team meetings within grade levels through Special Ed Department. Whenever students are missing a number of days, we have the luxury of having a smaller school to be invested in those families and figure out, okay, why are, why are students not coming to school? Oftentimes, it is illness. We're finding the numbers for us right now, and Kate, Mrs. Hurstman shared them with me, are staggering. We're about triple the mental health referrals from where we were at last year. We're about tripling everything, from Say Something Reports to KPH referrals to, so we're finding a lot of our absenteeism is my child needs a mental health day, probably more so than sickness. And I don't have the numbers to compare that right now, but that's the trend that we've seen over the last few years.
What is considered chronic absentee, what how many abs?
Chronic definition is ten percent of the school days. So roughly eighteen days per year.
For any reason.
If you start to finish, yeah.
It's per child.
Per child.
You like to attend school for two months and then you move out of state, what percent of that? It's so tricky, it's how do you?
But for a whole school year, it's about eighteen days missed for, and we have almost thirty percent, twenty-six percent of kids that miss about eighteen days.
You look at it and say, you know, eighteen over the course of nine months, it's two days a month. You say, well, you know, it's not that big of a deal, early September, late September, one, two here and off, you know, but they start to pile up as the year goes on.
Do excused absences count?
Yes.
Yeah, that's all.
Oh, you said that, because yeah, we go on like this, family vacation, that's three weeks of teaching.
We have our student support team meetings, we talk about attendance and we, we understand a lot of families communicate going to a hockey tournament. That's a real thing. I do, maybe I'm wrong in this, feel like we get hit at the middle school. I think the thought is, ah, it's just seventh and day three, we don't have credit yet, we don't have the high school varsity sports. So I do think we see more of those excused trips where, and we are going to compare that this year.
And that's interesting because we go on a trip every year and they get sent with homework, work.
So you have to stop them at trips.
That's so good for them, but they get sent with work, so they're working, but it's still, it doesn't matter.
It's still considered an absence. Even things like bereavement are considered absences.
And what we do with that, so student support team is our group of team, we meet every Friday morning, or try to. We break down the list of attendance, all these pieces and really look, okay, who are we tackling this week? Okay, this student's missed three days, not because of that excused reading, et cetera.
Just to clarify on that, because you want to check from twenty-six point, something down ten percent. Ten percent is eighteen days.
Ten percent of students missing, being on.
Twenty-six percent of students missing.
Miss eighteen days a month.
Right.
Instead of quarter of a student.
Yeah, well, twenty-six percent is, it's a big number.
Yeah.
It's half the rate of a hundred, you know, fifty percent of the students.
But it doesn't seem like eighteen days a year is, is terrible. If, if you're talking, they're missing forty days a year at twenty-six percent, I'm, I'm, you know.
Eighteen days is three weeks of teaching.
Eighteen weeks of teaching.
Three weeks plus.
I can be sick two days a month easily.
It's still three weeks of teaching.
I know, but I think of my kids, I'm like, oh my gosh, are they, because we have, every winter, we go on vacation. And then there's a hockey tournament here, there, and then I don't feel well, and then, boom, my kids, but they do well in school.
There's a staggering number of you, when you look at the reading and the math scores, what we broke up this summer, is our staff missing. So if your child misses that eighteen to twenty days, staff member happens to miss the eighteen or twenty days, that's, that's a month plus of missed reading math.
Education.
And teachers get sick time, I mean, it happens, but.
And is there a correlation between those chronic absentee?
Yes, there is. Very strong correlation.
And what's worse is that at the high school level, when you're doing block scheduling, your absent two days, your absent a Tuesday, right? You don't necessarily, you see that teacher once a week.
Right, right, right.
It's that one, yeah.
So that's huge.
I had one this week and it was lost.
And Mr. Watts is out for two days, I mean, students know, and it's different. It's, you know, it's a sub shortage and it's Mr. Briggs teaching math, which is not good. And then finally, increasing that student engagement, that means a number of things. It's, it's good teaching practice, it's also getting kids to come to school. We did drama science, we had fifty-five students sign up for drama for a fall show. Football, we've got thirty-something kids playing football. Civil rights, we're up to, so just offering things that get to people, kids to school.
Yeah.
School's not fun for many of our kids, so it's not about the math and the reading. So getting them through the door is just a huge piece that we want to focus on this year. Respectful response, responsible, we didn't put a number to this, this year because, so last year, if you recall, there were numbers attached. We're seeing a lot of behaviors. And to be quite frank, to keep up with what's called our BI bars, those are our teachers, when there's an infraction, they fill out this form. We can't keep up, we included. There's just that many behaviors. And when you look at this old, so tier two, what that means is this old triangle, years ago, most of your kids fell into that green area. Which means it's not uncommon for a middle school kid to hit somebody and not keep their hands to themselves down the hallway. The yellow is more that tier two. These are more the infractions where there's some swearing in the hallway, it's a little more severe. The ones at the top of that, which really should be in the red, is typically, what is it, five, six, seven percent of your school. We're not seeing that in our triangle anymore. We're seeing a much bigger yellow population. An example of this is our check-in system. On our student support days, we have fifty-five kids on our list to check in every Friday. That doesn't sound like a lot. This is not necessarily kids that are special, most of these are regular Ed students that do not have case managers or a lot of these tier-two supports. We are seeing a much greater number in the red at the top, it is not five percent. The number of uses for our school psychologist this year because of threats has increased, just the work I've done and just our building. So we're seeing a lot more of this, so we are trying to increase those supports in the yellow. Some of those referrals that Christine was talking about earlier, a lot of times when you see kids in the yellow, the teachers come to us and say they need to test for Special Ed, thinking they belong in a behavior program. When that's not always the case, right, Christine? So we are trying to offer more supports for these students to keep them regulated, keep them in class. And that population is, is growing. So here's our action steps for that. We review all of these areas. We need to probably do a better job, Chris and I spoke last week, of reviewing our positive behavior intervention support matrix. What that means is talking to students about areas of the school to behave. When we have an assembly, it's me reminding them, this is how you enter auditorium, this is how you sit, this is how you listen. So reviewing those pieces that a lot of the kids have never been in auditorium, it's a real thing. School bus behavior, helping our drivers, et cetera. So reviewing those expectations. Again, the parent parental involvement and just, not just the negative, hey, your student was in trouble today, but that positive, this is what they did really well today. So that, that continuous communication in working with, with families. The BIR, BIR data, behavioral intervention reports. We're using our part-time secretary, part-time academic support to assist me in a lot of these behaviors. She currently has, I think she said twelve that are almost heavy labor duty, that she's checking in pretty much daily. Some every period. They do charts, they go to class, hopefully, they make it through a class, they come out. She's, you know, all these incentives and that number's increased. So we're using her, it's been awesome. And then our positive reinforcements, PBIS rewards. We do hand out, you know, rewards for, for positive things that are going on in, in the school. So this is, again, is a snapshot, we are doing, just kind of have one with me. Each department's kind of broken up into SMART goals and there's a lot of activities, way too much, but that hopefully provides a little bit of a snapshot. We're constantly monitoring weekly, again, the late starts, the professional development days, the department meetings, the faculty meetings, just sharing the good stuff that's happening, what's working for you, that's not working for me, et cetera.
What were the things you said you talked a lot about, you know, that what can we do? It's like, what should we stop doing, what isn't working, what were some of those things?
Yeah, so you've heard of safety care training. A lot of it is regulating, so we're doing the regulated classroom. I did bring this, the book that Peter was referencing. Behaviors tell a story. And I think oftentimes, we forget that even a non-verbal communications, oftentimes it's verbal, they blow up. They blow up quick, but there's always a story attached. And I think we forget, I think this is my twenty-fifth year in education, I constantly have to be reminded, there's, there's chapters on anxiety, OBD. So some of the things, to answer your question, the stop doing is look at our approach. So many of the behaviors, it's not intentional, but something's happening. So here's an example, student walks in with a hat. We have a no hat rule at the junior high. Simply, some staff may say, hey, take your hat off, across, across the gymnasium. Seems like a pretty small thing, right? Not in the world of some of our kids, and it just creates a trigger. Yeah, so our approach, our interventions and how we, the check-ins, a lot of times, we're not doing that. The mental health piece is a balancing act, we talked a lot about, because you can't just stop. We do an online forum, so student will request a counselor. The tricky part is that students are missing a lot of academics right now. They need the counselor, it's a real thing, but now they're missing reading, and now they're missing English. So some of it's not necessarily just stopping it altogether, but changing it, or changing our approach. This book I read, Peter gave it to me last spring, and as you can see, I tagged, I think, every single chapter. And it's just great, it's just, again, it's not stopping what I'm doing, but it's definitely giving a different perspective. I'm not sure if that answers your question. I think it's ongoing, we're continuing book studies tomorrow to have these conversations about what's working, what's not. Some of it's the human element, some people just have the it factor. You know what I mean, those coaches or teachers that you've seen are just like, wow, that one's incredible, they've got it. It's just intuitive, that need to keep coaching, so. Sure, that solely answers the question, but it's just, it's just so much. And I know, and you're welcome to shadow, you know, come, and you know, you've got today.
I know, and I think about, I was actually thinking about my kids, just the environment, the school environment is so different than when I went to school. And it was the stress level, and my kids, my two older kids are, they do okay. But I never had, and it's good and bad, everything, right at my fingertips, Google classrooms, I'm missing an assignment. That one assignment is costing me everything, and now I might not be able to play sports. And if, like, I never had that kind of stress where it's like, oh my God, if I don't ace that quiz, it's all over, everything's over. And I know it. And I just try to tell my kids, communicate with their teachers, but having, I don't remember ever having, it's all right in your face in every class and one little thing can. you can fail a classroom for missing one little thing, but then if you fix it, then all of a sudden, you're getting an A again. That, just the thought of that gives me anxiety. And that's what these kids are living. I don't know, I just.
Yeah, so the regulated classroom is another program we're using. And so Kate just sent out a survey, Kate's our school counselor, on what do you do, how often do you use it, and what techniques are you using for your class? The whole purpose of it is to regulate the adult, right? Because that's important, so many adults are not regulated coming in. And to regulate our students. And what the feedback is, in classroom eighth grade, there's probably twenty-two to twenty-four kids per class, because it's a large, it's over a hundred kids. They said, you know, I try to regulate a class of twenty-two, but fifteen don't need it, the seven do. So imagine these seven are laying on the floor, and you know, it's just, and that's what they're struggling with. So it's constant conversation. It's just, keep that professional development. It's just continued conversation about what can we do better differently or stop doing it.
Yeah.
And even how we discipline students. I mean, we're always, you know, you want to be fair, and you want to follow policy in our handbooks. But it's just, it's a lot different. The F word is a very common course of language in homes now. And that wasn't the case when I was, started ten years. You could hear that word, it got your attention, and you're probably potentially going home. So it's, hey, come here, you sit down, you take ten minutes to educate. It's not a term we do, you know, so it's. And I'm not complaining, I'm just telling you the reality of kind of what we're seeing. And how do we structure differently, I think we really have to look at. And we've had a lot of conversations with Michelle about outdoor, hands-on. We're seeing a lot of our kids just need that. They just cannot, hey, sit still for thirty seconds due to this, and this one, that's a real thing.
Yeah. And the only thought I had when I was looking at that is it's amazing that only thirty percent for math and English, it's not just one subject, are like getting where they need to go. And I always think, like, in my, well, line of work, like, anyway, you think about the user. The user is the kid. Is the user part of the process? Like, okay, you're, you know, you guys are at the summer retreat, and it's the teachers that are providing, but, okay, let's get the user involved, the kids involved. Hey, thirty percent that it's working for you, why is it working for you? Sixty-whatever percent that it's up, what? Yeah, you must, I mean, but I wonder how.
That's what you said, we're sharing the data with the kids, so the kids understand.
But getting their feedback, not just you, this is happening to you, but what, how could that, what could we do to help you get there?
Right, and I would think that would be part of the conversation when you're sharing the data with the kids.
I think it's important to think about that growth conversation to realize almost all of our kids make growth. You could probably count on one of your kids that actually didn't make any progress.
Right.
So when the kids are making growth, the question is, are they making the projected growth based on how they scored in the fall to the spring?
And it's a test, which doesn't work for everybody.
Are they making the whole year's worth of, from wherever they started in the fall to the spring? And that's when the conversation. So we know that some of the engagement practices and some of the, all the things we're trying to work on are making a difference. Kids are making growth. The question is, could they make more? So the data says, well, thirty-six point six percent of kids made that projected growth.
Well, and if they tested well enough, right? Maybe they made the growth, but they didn't test well.
And the test is a snapshot, too, it's not a.
A smart gets it, but she can't test, she freaks out. I'm sure she's part of the thirty percent. But it's more engaging with the kids to find out like what's working.
And as Michelle said earlier, we do have, we can break down all the demographics, male, female, special ed, regular ed, so it's going on. So it is very intriguing, and it probably wouldn't tell the story that you might anticipate.
I'm sure you all think about, here I am, like, oh, I've got a brilliant idea. You raise the student, you're like, listen, it's what we do.
It is fascinating to see, you know, a student miss this much school, but still go this much, you know, and there's just so many variables, but it's, and that's the task. And then the mental health is just another, an obstacle. It's real, it's here, adults, kids. And how do you navigate that? Just getting a kid to stay in school? You know, yesterday, Friday, the student stayed in school because we had civil rights. I'm not sure how engaged throughout the day, but the student stayed in school, right? Just went, go to the next, and that's, it's real, at all levels, so.
Well, I think your engagement piece that you talked about is a big piece of that. I mean, first of all, to get them to school, and then the next piece of getting them engaged in each specific class is the next hurdle, you know? But if they're not engaged, none of it is going to take hold. That's the trick, and every kid is different. What grabs them?
Well, the real trick is, participating might look like engagement.
Right.
But is it learning?
Right.
And so it's really a challenging issue.
And self-esteem is such an issue at the middle school to begin. So you know a student that's not strong in math or reading, you're going to have behavior. I mean, it's just this, yeah, figure it all out, which we will. I have faith, right? Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to just read a few paragraphs. One paragraph, and this is out of the introduction to that book. It says, ten percent of school population or nine to thirteen million, nine to thirteen million children struggle with mental health problems. In a typical classroom of twenty, chances are good that one or two students are dealing with serious psychological stresses relating to poverty, domestic violence, abuse and neglect, or a psychiatric disorder. There's also growing evidence that the number of children suffering the effects of trauma and those with autism-related social deficits is also on the rise. This is universal, this is not isolated to Winslow May. This is, this is all of us, and we're all dealing with it.
So that was one of my questions. Is there, is this like a, is this like a trend that's going to continue to go up? Or is it just like a phase we're going through? Or do they have any kind of data as far as what's driving? Why, why is this not going to happen?
Yeah. There are all kinds of theories and ideas as to what's driving it. You know, a lot of people will say, will talk about the COVID years didn't help us anymore because we put kids in isolation, kept them apart from others, that hurt.
Social media.
Social media.
Right here.
All of the pieces that you have.
With a kid's hand.
Single parent family.
Yeah.
Drug abuse.
Domestic abuse.
A lot of issues feeding into that.
Used to be an extended family.
We were saying before.
Yeah, but over here, just, you know, what, like this, you know, we've got a book, we're reading on the same thing, you know, on that, it's just, we saw it coming before it really took off during that time, and now we'll start with that. Reality of, okay, we're here, now what do we do about it, how do we fix it? Well, I mean, as much as.
Reengage kids with each other rather than all these other surroundings and get comfortable around one another again, probably is a simple thing, but it's a starting point.
I mean, that's, that's obviously, you know, a piece that feeds into it that is unique. Obviously, we had too many pandemics that we've had to worry about. But, I mean, obviously, the aspect of, you know, the phone and technology, and, I mean, social discourse in this country at all age levels is not pretty. And, and that, that's been increasing. It's not, you know, these kids are, you know, getting some of these behaviors just out of the blue. I mean, it's happening in all aspects of our society. So how could they not absorb these things and get the results? I mean, that they, where they're at because of those. You know, and I think timing-wise, I think some of that, you know, is piggyback on to the same sort of timeframe as COVID, maybe some before, obviously, because social media's been around. But it's obviously grown tremendously over the past, I don't know, you can say ten years anyway. Because, I mean, I just think, you know, putting in perspective with your kids, I mean, my kids went through, through junior high, you know, cell phones weren't such a thing, okay? When they got into high school, you know, they had a track phone, you know, sort of thing. They didn't have, you know, full-on access to everything that kids all have now, that. So that, you know, in that ten years period, I mean, there's a lot of that is changing. You feed that in together with the pandemic and all the other things. You know, it's just, it's piling a lot of stuff on these kids, and you should not be surprised. Some of it is within our control to adjust. And, you know, I think some of the things you discussed with that. Engagement at all levels, families and students is a big piece of that, so. I like, I, cellphone policy, I don't know if that's far enough in that that's helping yet, but it can't hurt, that's for sure.
With Chad, referenced the cellphone, the new one here at the high school W U C, he gave some resources that went along with that. And I think the guy that he's referencing in that, if you go to his, it's a TED Talk or YouTube video, whatever, just watch it, and what he puts in there, the data and stuff that he shows, it all paints a pretty clear picture of where things changed over the last twelve years. You know, and pretty interesting stuff to, you know, to see. It's like, yeah, that makes sense. That's not the only thing, but it's certainly factored.
Well, one's piling on top of the other, you know, with various issues these kids are being subjected to over their adolescence. So, keep working, and I like some of your, your goals are lofty, and I'm hoping you can get there. I know you guys will work hard at it. Any other questions for Jason? All right. So E L A curriculum in grades eleven and twelve, just be, Michelle.
So we'll please agree before you a continuation of the work you did with us in the spring when we brought the grades nine and ten English department chart curriculum before you with assorted updates to the Euro standards and some of the changes that were made there. This is just a continuation to complete the nine to twelve skill and sequence. So some highlights of the changes that were made in grades nine and ten, or sorry, ten and eleven, twelve, very similar to those that were made in nine and ten. So emphasis from the English department was placed on grammar and conventions and specifically identifying where the components of grammar and different conventions would be taught in the nine through twelve grade span to ensure that all students would have access to those, that content and skills before graduation. Rather than teachers choosing what their favorite part of grammar is to teach, and maybe teaching that, and the kid gets it sixteen times throughout their Winslow career, they would bear much attention, place certain things in ninth grade, tenth grade, one, so that it made sense. There was a little emphasis put on informational text. We know that that's an area we're working on. And so I, they specifically made that a skill in the course to make sure that we're watching that, that kids are able to identify the structures in an informational text and do what they need to do with that. They made an effort to have M L A format made uniform across all of the grade spans. Again, so that kids were having a similar experience in whichever English class they were taking. And when I went before the curriculum committee, here are some of the things the committee noted. There was adequate rigor in the course. The committee liked the grammar pieces and the intentionality of covering the conventions. They liked seeing a common language. You can recognize the Lucy Hawkins language that's done in the elementary school. You could see that same language being used at the high school. So a consistent way that we talk about English language learning through the entire district was seen as a positive. The committee noted that the curriculum addresses needs of students both headed to college and those who are not headed to college. And finally, the committee noted the importance of teaching students how to dissect media content. It's more important now than ever. That was bases explicitly in there. So I, do you have any questions? Or this went before the committee, seventeenth, I think, and was unanimously voted for by the school board.
Well, I would say, having done the meeting, I, I'm not an E L A person per se. It's not my strength, but, but to hear the discussion and the passion that our teachers have for the material, but also the professionalism that goes into going through and preparing these materials and evaluating what they're doing and what they're teaching and how that fits in to the grander scheme of K through twelve, in this case, ten and eleven, eleven and twelve. But, you know, it's impressive to me listening to professional educators talking about it at a level that, you know, is over my head in regards to the techniques and so forth. But, but a lot of good work there by some very good educators, so.
Yeah, it was pretty obvious how much thought and effort got put in to make sure that it was really comprehensive, K through twelve, but especially nine through twelve. Yeah, it was, they did a nice job. You all did a nice job.
A reminder, too, to the board that, you know, the foundation of the curriculum is the standards provided by the state. And then we work to determine that the content is what we want students to know and skills, what we want them to be able to do that we can measure. And those are the things we bring before you to review and kind of my mindset's the foundation. What else you see in the document are things like resources and instructional activities and so forth. And those are differentiated by teacher. So if they have me for a teacher, I see what I want kids to know and be able to do, and I've got a great activity in this book I want them to read and so forth. Whereas Karen, teaching the same course, she has a totally different way she's going to get at what she wants, what we want kids to know and be able to do. But that part, what we want them to know and be able to do, is locked in. That is foundational, and that's really important because it communicates our values as a community. What we've said is most important for kids to know and be able to do in order to meet these standards. So it allows us to be consistent and not deviate with each new teacher that's hired on some offshoot of something they really like to do because they like to do it. It keeps us grounded as a district, which is more equitable for all of our kids. Doesn't matter which ninth grade class they land in, they're going to have, this is what you need to know and be able to do. How you get there, I mean, that's why you pay teachers to, it doesn't pay as a thing, right? That's the creative, joyful part of teaching.
I was going to say, it allows for that individuality, too.
Yeah, it's rooted in something that the board says, these are the things.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Michelle? Before we vote on this, we should have voted on Jason's goals for the junior high. So we should do it in the proper order, so we can step back for just a moment. Do we have a motion to approve the junior high school goals?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? I'm with the approval of junior high goals as presented. Okay, junior, okay, now we can move on to Michelle.
I have one question.
Sure.
Has there been any thought to reviewing the Lucy Hawkins based upon the information that's come out over the last three or four years? And just the lack of limits?
Right, so we don't have that as our reading program. We still use the rubric for writing.
Okay.
And that's what's in the elementary school. We have a reading program. And so when we're able, have the capacity to do so, we can come back to look at the writing and see are there any changes? Is this adequate, or are there changes and updates we want to make to the writing portion? But that's the, it is not.
Good old Lucy.
We have a motion to approve the E L A curriculum for grades eleven and twelve as presented.
So move. Second.
For a second, any other questions, concerns, or discussions? Okay, all with the favor of approving those goals as presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the committee as well.
Thanks for the staff as well.
Yes, yeah. Lots of work goes into those, thanks. All right, so next up, we have reaffirmation of Paul. All right, so, next up, we have reaffirmation of policy J K E. Which, my hands on here, expulsion of students.
So I apologize for the formatting of this, some of it is lighter or darker, but typically what happens is, things are bold, dark, it's new language, things that are stripping out things that were there that we no longer have, but maybe it's just my eyes or the, or the ink or something, I don't think it's real dark, so I'd just like to walk you through this a little bit. So the first paragraph on the file J K E stayed the same, that did not change at all. But in the second section, you'll see two sentences were added in bold. And this is, this is recommended language since the last time we did this, because students in grade five or below cannot be expelled. Except for violations of the country's schools act as provided in twenty-eight MSRA, so that's, that's accurate, obviously, and then the next piece is superintendent has a discretion of the main law to provide an alternative to expulsion on a case-by-case basis. Such determination must be made in writing, and I think those of you who are sitting around this table understand what that could, could mean. As opposed to your tradition, expulsion hearing.
Is that a big deal in terms of, we have a lot of people getting expelled at the three, five, or below?
No, no, you can't.
Not a big change.
No, you can't, as a matter of fact, the laws have changed, you used to be able to suspend kids in elementary school, now you can only suspend them for three days. You used to be able to guide a child in elementary school to where they need to be, now you can't touch them, you just have to put their hands up and guide them. So there are a lot of things that have changed that make it more difficult to help kids make some good choices. It's just, it's just hard, it's harder, which is why you need more people to do this work, because you need people to make sure they get to where they need to be. Because it takes sometimes two people to get them to where they're supposed to be going, based on the strategies you're supposed to use by law, by statute. So the other, the only other change to this one, if you look in the middle of the page, number four and number five, our number four and number five have been struck out to replace it with the new number four, five, and six, which they recommend that we have to our policy.
So, yeah, we, we took this as a reaffirmation, given that the the policy itself, per se, the intent of the policy hasn't really changed, some of these things, like J K E dash R, like in that number four that got added, I mean, add things in other places, or we've more defined some things that want, is clearly defined. But the crux of policy is still essentially the same, and it, obviously, we have to follow state law, which is, we wanted to make sure that that actually said those things, such as the grade five and nine, and so, so, but.
So do you need a motion?
Yeah, this comes to you in the hall, I'm motion, I'm going to the doc, and you change this policy.
And second, Kim.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor of approving, approving the reaffirmation of policy J K E? Thank you.
Second, second policy you have is file EBCC, which is Bonfres, and if you look on the second page on that one, the only thing that really has changed, which is why this came brought to you as a reaffirmation, is under E. It's no longer referred to as the PET process, it's the IEP process. That's still a change.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the reaffirmation of Bonfres, do we have a second?
Steve's second.
Steve had the second, okay. Any other discussion, question? Okay, all in favor of approving the reaffirmation of EBCC, this is soon as. So, next up is vote on appointments, so we have a number of appointments?
Motion to take them as a group.
Second.
Wait one second, yeah.
Karen, Steve.
If there's no objection, I guess, all in favor of taking them as a group? Do you mean this, okay. So, do we have a motion to approve the list of appointments?
So move.
For a second.
Second.
Make it easier for the secretary, they can do it all the time.
She does second a lot, that's. We've noticed, we don't know what was Karen.
Just put Karen for all, it'll be good.
All right, so, there's no discussion? All in favor of approving the list of appointments? We have a number of resignations, which Peter has already accepted, thank them for their service.
Kyle, duly moving on?
No, I have a baby.
Oh, so you.
So it's occupied.
Occupied. He's, he's coaching a whole new.
He's starting a future team.
Actually, good baby, I've seen babies, I guess I'll be.
Good for him, good for him.
But, yeah, wish them well. All right, other business? Don't think they have anything else? It's all good, so, given that, our next regular scheduled meeting is November twenty-fifth. Six o'clock right here. There's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion for German. All right, wait a second, Steve, you got this one?
Second.
All right, all in favor of German?
Oh, yeah.